On our agenda is items from council.
I'd like to pull D three, four, and five.
D three, four, and five?
Yes, please.
The three regarding the foreclosed properties?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, council, anything else you all would like to talk about now or pull or whatever? We are gonna, I will mention that on E three, we'll go do our executive session right before that item, we can just step next door, handle that real quick, come back in and do vote on E three, and then have the rest of the meeting, so. Okay, seeing nothing from council, we'll go ahead and move into citizens' communication, and anyone that would like to come forward and talk about anything whatsoever, please come up to the podium, and if you would, restrict your comments to about five minutes or less, we've got a respect for everyone else. And regarding the item on the, just a minute, the pulled items, you can get up and discuss those at that time, so, yeah, you won't miss your chance, okay, if there's questions of you, so, okay, Ms. Stafford, name and address for the record, I'm sorry.
Okay, my name is Jenny Stafford, I live at 210 Wearden, and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Midcoast Family Services, and thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I want to tell you about when I went to one of my very first HUD conferences, and there was a topic called NIMBY, and I didn't have a clue what it was about, I was pretty green at the time, and I went in and sat down and realized it was a whole session on not in my backyard, and I sat and learned about how you would work with a neighborhood that might be a little bit concerned about having maybe a homeless shelter or a women's shelter in their backyard, and little did I know at that time that I would be on the other side of the issue today, and I stand here saying, "Not in our backyard." I'm concerned about the proposal of a possible bar going in close to the women's shelter, and I'm concerned because it won't just affect us, but it'll affect the whole neighborhood. But let me tell you first a little bit about the women's shelter, I've talked about it a lot, but I'm gonna keep talking about it, we have a capacity of forty, today we have forty-nine people in there, they are packed in every place you can imagine, they said they're running out of water, they're running out of food, and running out of air, so it's a pretty tight place, but that means that for every one of those families that they're in crisis, and somebody is probably looking for them. So when the sun goes down at night, our anxiety goes up, because we can't always see what's happening on the other side of the fence, we've had incidents of people climbing over the fence and climbing out of the fence, we've had stalkers, and it's not unusual for us to have threatening phone calls, it happens pretty regularly, so at night, our anxiety level is already up, so imagine the possibility of a bar going in around the corner, where fun won't end until two o'clock in the morning, it's really gonna make our job so much more difficult, so I know that we are outside of the area that would even be impacted by any change in the ordinance, but I want to tell you that I want you to consider the unintended consequences of a bar going in that neighborhood, and when I stand before you today and ask you to consider about NIMBY, it's really not my neighborhood, it's our neighborhood, it's a shared neighborhood, it's a neighborhood where there's a school, a children's home, a church, a home for disabled adults with mental health and physical disabilities, it's a battered women's shelter, that's the neighborhood that we're talking about, but more importantly, it's also a neighborhood of many, many single-family homes, so please consider that as you talk about the ordinances tonight that perhaps will affect the placement of a bar in our backyard. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stafford. And we do have a staff report on that issue later in the agenda. Citizens' communication is still open, anyone that would like to come forward and speak about anything at all, now's the time, if you came in a few minutes late, come on up now, and if you would, name an address for the record, and then try to limit your remarks to five minutes or less.
My name is Reynolds Tharp, and I live at 304 Turtle Rock, Victoria, Texas, I wanted to come and speak because I had read that there was some concern about continuing the recycle program, and I hope that all of you will consider the recycle program not on a financial basis, we've been spending the last thirty to forty years teaching our children that it's an environmental issue, not necessarily an economic issue, so, you know, we have quite a success in our elementary schools in recycling programs, and, you know, if we're gonna sit here as the city and say, "We're gonna discontinue recycling because it's not economic," who's gonna go down to every one of the elementary schools, junior highs, and tell all these students that it's not important anymore? I know that, you know, it's a little less than two dollars is what I read in the paper that to additional cost, I know that I haven't read anything or seen any discounts on my bill as a reduction in fuel costs that we've had over the last couple of years, I didn't see the price go down, so, you know, maybe it's offset by that, but the most important thing is, is that I hope that all of y'all will consider the environmental impact and what we've been teaching our children for the last thirty to forty years about recycling. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tharp. Citizens' communication is still open, I don't want to cut anyone off. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close citizens' communication, we'll move in the rest of our agenda.
Item C one is an ordinance amending the 2015-16 City of Victoria Environmental Services budget in the amount of $236,826 to provide funding for the expansion and drilling of replacement wells at the Victoria landfill, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
This does have a public hearing with it, so if anyone wants to speak to this specific item, I'll open that public hearing now. Okay, seeing no one, and this is first reading, so it'll come back later again, we'll, council will see it again, you know that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve item C one.
Second. Motion is second, are there any questions, council? Anything known, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, pass to C two.
C two is an ordinance granting to Centerpoint Energy Resources Corporation, doing business as Centerpoint Energy Texas Gas Operations, the right privilege and franchise to construct, install, extend, remove, replace, abandon, operate, and maintain its facilities within the public rights and way of the City of Victoria for the transportation, delivery, sale, and distribution of natural gas, containing provisions related to the foregoing subject, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Is that a public hearing?
Yes, it is posted for a public hearing.
It's fine, we'll go ahead, let's do the public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on C two, now would be the time. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing on C two, we have a motion.
I move to adopt.
Second, okay, council, are there any questions on this item? We know why it's there, so, very good, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, so the consent agenda, I guess we'll consider D one, two, six, and seven first.
Sure. Four items will be approved with a single vote tonight, our first, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on August 2nd, 2016, second, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a vendor services agreement for uniform rental with G and K Services to provide uniforms for the designated personnel in various city departments in an estimated amount of $45,000 for fiscal year 2017, declaring an effective date. Six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for a homeland security grant application in the amount of $30,000 to purchase sixty-one Avon gas mask kits and four microphones to be used by the police department, and declaring an effective date. And D seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary for a homeland security grant application for $9,161.62 to purchase a CSI 360 upgrade kit and a VPX laptop server crime scene 360-degree camera system, which will include a city match of $1,208.78 for the total purchase price of $10,370, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the item's all passed, so we'll just, no particular order, or could we read all three and then talk about them together?
Sure, that would be fun.
That'd be okay?
Sure, three items to be approved by a single vote include item D three, a resolution approving the sale of tax foreclosed property, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to convey 403 Troy Street to Richard C. and Josie Leos in exchange for $300, and declaring an effective date. Four is a resolution approving the sale of tax foreclosed property, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to convey 1110 Brunhilde to Eddie Joe Peña in exchange for $2,500, and declaring an effective date. And D five is a resolution approving the sale of tax foreclosed property, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to convey 3607 Cypress to Raquel Rodriguez in exchange for $12,000, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Okay, is that, that motion in second would be for all three together? That's okay?
Yes.
Okay, just clarifying, discussion?
Well, I asked to pull this because this is my first go-around with selling foreclosed properties, and I was just curious about some of the procedure, some of these have been held for a little while, some of them for really not more than a few months, and I didn't know what the advertising is, you know, how realistic these bids are, because of course, my first time through, I was very surprised at the values versus the amounts we're gonna be selling them for, so I asked to pull it so we could have a little bit of discussion on that whole thing.
Maybe a walkthrough of the process?
Absolutely, and council member, Stephen Sausato with the law firm of Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson, I think I got all four names right, is here, that's the firm that is contracted to handle this process for the city and the county, and so, Mr. Sausato, if you'd like to step up and help answer the questions, I'm sure you'll be more familiar with the details of the procedure than I am.
Thank you, thank you, council, thank you, mayor, city staff for having me here today. Yes, to address your question, these are what are called tax resale properties, before they ever make it to the council, these are properties which have already been set for public auction, at the public auction, there were no bidders, being no bidders, they were struck off to the county as trustee for all the underlying tax authorities, in this case would be the city, the county, and the school district, at that time, because there were no minimum bids met by law for the first time around, people can submit subsequent bids, if those subsequent bids are less than the minimum bid of the first sale, that requires your authorization, as well as authorization of the city, I mean, the county and the school district, so that, I'm not sure if that clears it up a little bit, these were advertised once, were set for public auction, nobody bought them, now they're here before you because we have a lesser bid.
Okay, thank you, that also explains that each one that's foreclosed, and then the county takes back for everybody, it does not necessarily come to us if the offer is for the minimum bid or more, those are handled directly.
That is correct, anytime the minimum bid are higher is tendered, it does not come before you, only when it's less than the minimum bid.
That, that's helpful, thank you.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So, is the minimum bid taxes owed, what's the minimum bid?
If you see on the, on the information sheet I provided to you in your packets, the minimum bid would be the lesser of two values, one, either the amount of taxes owed, or two, the value of the land, let's say taxes, for hypothetically speaking, taxes were ten thousand, land was twenty, appraisal district changes it, now the land's only five and taxes are ten, the minimum bid would start off at $5,000, so it's a lesser of the value of the land or the amount of taxes due to the taxing authorities.
So, it, I'm glad you pulled these, and I would encourage council to pull and question anything if we're, especially newer council members, we've had conversations about these in the past, and it's been a long time, and I know, Mr. Jalapaska, I remember we talked about putting for sale signs in the lots to try to get people aware of these to bid, I don't know if that ever happened.
Don't know if it ever happened either, the discussion was, many times the people that are next door don't know it's even up for sale, and would a guy that has a house in an area say, "Hey, I'd like to have a vacant lot, I'll put a barn on it, or a boat on it," or whatever, and many times that could be the case, because I've been approached twice in a number of years, that's not very many times, but saying, "I didn't know the thing was up for sale when I spotted it," so always suggested, do we go around and stake a sign on there saying this is gonna be, allowing the neighbors around it maybe a chance to bid?
So what is the advertising method again, just the advocate?
Yes, it's, the code requires us to advertise for three consecutive weeks prior to the initial sale in a paper that's, that has circulation throughout the area, so yes, it'd be advertised in that, in that respect.
Those auctions are held the first Tuesday of every month at the courthouse.
It's the first Tuesday of every month, and I will state, the ones you have before you have three tax sale properties, normally we have dozens of things that go for sale, it's only the ones that don't get sold the first time around that make it in front of you, and only if subsequent bids are less than the minimum bid of the first sale.
So for the viewing public, it's, again, when is that auction?
First Tuesday of every month.
First Tuesday of every month, it's actually on the steps in front of the courthouse still, because I bid before, years ago, I went over there, and so you stand out there, you can envision, when someone reads these documents, and someone's standing there actually bids, so, to encourage people to go bid, I wonder if we couldn't circulate these on Facebook or social media too, in addition to the newspaper?
I'd be curious to see if the county would just put them up on their website, since they're conducting the, this whole process for all the taxing entities, it seems like the easiest thing to do is, here's properties for, you know, coming up for sale.
I know it's in y'all's website, Steve, right, I can see it on y'all's website.
It is on our website, we do, we do advertise it throughout the state and in every county, and we, every tax sale property that's set for sale in your county as well will be advertised in that same manner.
Well, maybe we could do a PSA on where to look, I don't know, just a thought, see, I had a question, I, you know, we all do our homework differently, and I looked up the praise values on each of these, everybody does different things, I was always concerned, I have one question, typically, one of these properties, taxes go unpaid five, six years, whatever, you guys decide to move on it and say, "Okay, we're never gonna collect anything, we need to get it back on the tax rolls through this process of taking possession, reselling it to someone who hopefully will use it and pay taxes on it," what's to prevent the prior owner from coming around and bidding on it, and I guess with your minimum bid, or they could get it below, and getting it and getting out of some prior taxes, is that possible?
No, it's not possible, that particular scenario is addressed in the Texas Property Tax Code, he would have to pay the full amount that's owed.
Okay.
Because he's the owner.
Very, very good, there's no way they could finagle that, do y'all look into who, any connections from family members, I wonder? I'm telling you, guys, some of y'all chuckling, but it's a concern.
I could imagine, we don't research each individual bidder, unfortunately, there's not a process that allows us to critique each individual prior to the tax sale, other than if they do owe taxes to the county, they're not gonna be allowed to bid at the sale. And but, when I say county, I mean all, all entities.
I just wanted to be fair, like all the rest of us do, that first one was, had a taxable value of 720 bucks on the, and I think you included all this in your report, as evidently. Okay.
It's really D five that especially caught my attention by the time I'd read the other two, and it's like, you know, this has got a value that's pretty significant, obviously there's improvements, and this bid is very, very low in relation to it, so I like the discussion about other forms of advertisement, I mean, that's a lot of what it is, but I also understand the benefit of getting it on the tax rolls, and that the city's not the only one that has a say in these sales.
Right.
The important thing to remember is you're putting it back on the tax rolls, have a taxpayer there in the future.
Wouldn't, I have to say thank you to the law firm, I'm not gonna try to name all four of the partners, y'all have always done a good job, and even when I, years ago, contacted y'all, I think, I don't think I was even on council, very helpful, so, we appreciate that.
Well, thank you, I'm here at your disposal if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Do you have a motion, right?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, okay, those items passed, we'll do E one now.
E one is a resolution ratifying the city manager's action to amend a preservation incentive grant agreement with Edward and Valerie Wright for a project consistent with the city's preservation incentive grant program, to extend the term of the contract from August 4th, 2016 to September 4th, 2016, and declaring an effective date.
Will we adopt E one?
Second. Okay, motion in two seconds.
Is there gonna be enough time, is that gonna be enough time?
They asked for thirty days.
Right around the corner.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Further questions? And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, pass to E two.
E two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an interlocal agreement with the Victoria County Groundwater Conservation District for the Aquifer, Victoria Aquifer Storage and Recovery Demonstration Project, for a total project cost of $570,225, to which the city will contribute $265,113 in cash and in-game services, and declaring an effective date.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, again, motion in seconds, question?
I have a question.
The lease has question.
Okay, and on, and task number seven, it says, "During the cycling testing, treated water from the City of Victoria Distribution System will be recharged in well number nineteen, the water will be sent into the City of Victoria Distribution System," so is that our drinking water, so while they're doing the testing, we're gonna be drinking this water?
It is our treated drinking water that we will first inject into the aquifer and be doing chemical analysis, as well as taking level measurements for about a seven-month, seven or eight-month period, and then we will begin withdrawing that water and putting it, yes, back into our distribution system, of course, we will, the full-time be taking chemical analysis again, and it will be required to meet all applicable drinking water standards and be redisinfected, yes, ma'am.
And you're going to let us know when that process starts?
Certainly.
Okay.
Key to this is having that documentation and proof that this is going to work on others as we go forward, so the documentation is probably gonna be quite extensive, I would guess.
Will be.
Okay, another question was, in task number four, the City of Victoria will be required to provide the required bonds and insurance, stormwater protection, plan, local permits, safety programs, equipments, manuals, training, and build drawings and warranties, is that all included in that cost of the $570,225?
Yes, it is, and we will be passing most of those responsibilities down to our subcontractors, we're gonna have a number of subsequent contracts that will be coming before you for consideration, professional services contract with an engineering firm, and we'll pass those requirements to them through that contract, and then there'll also be a waterwell contractor that will be doing the work, and some of those responsibilities will be passed down to them through the, through the bid documents and the subsequent contract.
One question? One question, mayor, when do you project we'll know this is a success, or what are your?
We, we believe this project, if we can get it started in September 2016, September 2018, we should be completing the project, and so that's for sure by then, actually, I think we'll know some months prior to that, is because as we begin withdrawing the water and running the chemical analysis on it and that sort of thing.
Second quarter of eighteen.
Probably summer of eighteen, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Questions? Any other questions?
Just a comment, I'm really excited about this project and glad to see it get started.
Agreed.
I echo.
Hope it turns out right, and future councils are just as excited.
Good point.
Yeah, well, we're, it's a slow, long-term project, it's not happening overnight, we're gonna step into it slowly and make sure it's all solid and works well, so, it's very important. Any, no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
I wanted to, real quick, council, if we could do F one, there's people here writing on that, before we go into executive session, and do E threes, okay?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone got a memo regarding this issue? Jared, you did all the homework on it, huh?
I had a little help from, from Thomas, so.
Okay.
So you all have a copy of that memo, as you're aware, a couple of weeks ago, you had a, we had a resident come in and asked the city to look at some additional options in terms of our alcohol or liquor license, city code section fourteen dash ten, it's kinda outlined some limits of where the city's allowed or willing to allow a liquor license to be issued, it places limitations on, for, when creating a separation of three hundred feet between churches, schools, and hospitals, and establishes how that measurement is done, basically, it's measured from the front door of the proposed bar location to the property line of church, school, or hospital, a couple of different sections, but that's basically the gist of how that is measured, the TABC state law rules allow a city to take a more stringent approach, if that is what we would want to do, in addition to a church or school, they allow you to designate childcare facilities and traditional daycare facilities, and apply those same measurements to them, and the state law also uses a different measuring system, which would particularly be of benefit if you were trying to limit alcohol sales at, at the location that's been talked about, and that measuring system measures from property line to property line, so that makes a huge difference there, so in the memo, I outline those options for you on the second page, so basically, tonight, we just need some feedback from you of whether or not you would like to consider potentially extending the same separation requirements to childcare and/or daycare facilities, and there's a definition in the state law of what those are, it would, the childcare facility would apply to a facility such as Bronson School or Bronson Home, and then, as I said, it would, it could, could apply to traditional daycares, or, you know, and we could also amend the code to require those distance measurements to be measured from property, property line, consistent with the TABC rules, if you'd like, of course, any changes you make, existing businesses would be grandfathered and allowed to remain where they are today.
Jared, the photo that you sent us, that you gave us, it's measuring four hundred and twenty-five feet, and that's from the front door, that's using what we have right now?
That's using what we have right now, we would measure from the, from, in that case, that's the existing front door, you walk down the sidewalk and out the public sidewalk to the nearest property line of the school, and that's four hundred, approximately four hundred and twenty-five feet.
How would it change when you do the TABC, it'd be from the front door from property line to property line?
If you followed, where you follow TABC's measurements, it'd be from property line to property line, so it'd only be about sixty feet separation, that right-of-way separation there, so if you followed that measurement, the William Offre School could not be used as.
What is their, what is their minimum feet?
Three hundred foot.
Hundred?
Yes, sir.
No, the TABC, the state?
Three hundred foot is the same, same rule, we can't, we can't make it greater than three hundred feet.
They're just using property line to property line.
But they are using property line to property line, so in that case, it would only be sixty feet or so separated, separation, and it wouldn't be far enough away.
Don't know what the status of this application is, this TABC permit, but whatever we would do, we can't do an ex post facto rule or ordinance that would affect that establishment once they had their permit.
For our knowledge, there's no.
We haven't issued a permit or been asked to do anything, we, they, a potential tenant or property owner for the William Offre School has been in to talk with staff about what some of the requirements would be, and we even formally did this measurement for them, but we haven't officially been asked to do anything, and they haven't officially applied for a permit, to my knowledge.
But nothing may, it may never happen.
Yeah, there's some significant investment, whether it's a bar or converted into any other use, there's a significant investment in just securing the building, replacing the windows, a lot of the floor is missing, there's not a parking lot, so there's, there's a sizable investment to be made, no matter what the use would be.
That's putting it mildly sizable, I mean, I've been in that building, it's been a few years, but.
We, the staff believes it's very beneficial to follow the TABC rules on the marriage during property line to property line, and then adding in the childcare to our ordinance, so.
So, this, we can be more restrictive than the state, but.
It's, it's actually backwards, we can be less restrictive, I may have said it wrong, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We can be less restrictive than the state, but we're not allowed to be more restrictive, and I know that's a little counterintuitive to what we're used to, but.
If we're less restrictive, so we can override what the state says, and say five hundred feet?
Think about it this way, the way the state law is set up, it says, if the bar is within three hundred feet of church, public school or whatever, then the city has authority to regulate, so we could set our distance at ten feet if we wanted to, that's what he means by less restrictive, we could, the, the bar is within three hundred feet, we can then choose to regulate it however we want to, but we can't make our regulation be five hundred feet, because then the building isn't within three hundred to begin with, and we don't. within 300 to begin with, and we don't have authority under state law to regulate to begin with. It's a two-step analysis. And so what staff is proposing is, rather than us have a different standard than what state law allows, let's match our standard to what state law allows, to eliminate some of that confusion.
Does anybody remember why we have it door-to-door the way it is now? I don't remember ever hearing that discussed here.
I've forgotten when that was done. I believe it was late 80s.
Was it in the 90s?
Or early 90s or something.
On the rent, next to Northside Baptist?
Yeah.
That it? And they caused all the changes?
Oh, yeah, yeah, across the street.
Building looks like a turtle.
Turtle, the turtle building.
Yeah, yeah.
Right next to it.
Yeah.
I think the thing that's bothering me about this is that it's a retrofit, and that we don't have zoning. So the people that are in the area around it, it was a school, or it was an empty building that had been a school when they took, when they got involved in that area. And so it's the predictability for the surrounding neighborhood that concerns me also. If it's a vacant piece of property, it's a little bit, you know, as somebody moving into an area with vacant property, you get what you get. I'm not, you know, proposing that anything change. Anyway, I'm not sure what I'm proposing, so much as that it's the retrofitting that really has my attention in this case, and I'm trying to figure out whether there's something we should do. And Charmel, you just said that the staff, you know, kind of thinks that adding childcare facilities, but would that cover this area?
The distance is going to benefit the Bronson home.
Is that a childcare facility? It is. It's considered.
And then also the change of the distance, if you go to.
The change of the distance in this case is really the key. If you don't change, if all you do is add childcare, it's 390 feet to the property line, because of the way the measurement is done, to the Bronson property line, so.
Is that measurement state dictated? How we measure along the street lines and all that?
That's also outlined in the state law statute.
Really?
That's the part I'd rather change, is just sort of just point between the front door and the next property line. Because it doesn't stop anybody from coming out the door and turn around the corner and walk into the other property line.
Yeah, just close off your back door.
That's why property line.
Okay, so.
Property line to property line.
Or change your doors.
Needs to be consistent with TABC. Well, staff could bring back, and you would use the definition, the legal definition of childcare facility, which the Bronson home would fit. We could make that one change, and it would satisfy all the folks' concerns. In addition, though, y'all, I'm hearing staff say, well, we'd like to just match the state requirement.
If you do not change the measurement on the distance, it does not help the Bronson home, even if you add the childcare in. You've got to do both. You've got to do both.
Okay. And if we were to do that, everybody else, this might make their grandfather. I'm sure we have some situations around town that we find.
Couple of questions. Who owns the building, VIST, or it's been sold?
It's been sold.
I don't need to know.
And it's been sold. I think it's recently been sold again. It's not, whoever.
Historically, it has no, no value, historical. That's an old building.
It is.
So does historical code kick into that at all?
No. It does have, I believe it has some historical value, but there's not a code that's going to affect it.
Wanted to tear it down, it would kick in, when our ordinance kick in?
It might kick in the 60-day demolition delay. Yes, sir.
Now, is it a subject of maybe demolition, because it's dilapidated and pretty poor?
It's in rough condition. I don't know that it's.
Has code enforcement looked at it?
Oh, yes. We have, we've had numerous cases on it for years, primarily about keeping it secure, because kids or vagrants or something continue to break in the windows and doors. But it's a brick structure. I don't know that, I just know that there are pieces of the flooring that are gone. You know, it's an old structure where it had concrete beam foundation, and so there are just wood floors. And so there's a lot of that that is, that is brought up.
The roof hasn't caved in?
Not yet. But there are obviously some leaks in some of that that are historically happening, and repetitively putting water on parts of the floor that are causing that to leak. And so it's dangerous in the sense of someone getting in there and messing around. But I don't know that it's in danger, it's not in danger of falling down.
Council, would y'all be in agreeance for staff to bring back change to the ordinance with those two items?
I have one reservation about it. And it's the whole timing of it. We're only doing this because of the, not in my backyard. What makes this one so bad, because these people don't want it, but it was another, I have a hard time with.
Could be done at some time, though.
I can also tell you two, we've been in the process of revising all of our chapters in the code. And chapter 14, you'll, not only you'll get this revision, you'll get some other revisions in chapter 14, because they're all under review. We're just bringing chapter 14 back to you sooner, so.
And we're prepared to bring that September 6, I believe. That's the plan.
Mr. Bachmann, I would argue that, I mean, there are no issues until they become an issue. That's how, that's how things come up, you know. So there's probably a never-good time. But it's just, it becomes an issue at that time. And then it's a time to address it.
But it's not like it's.
Understand.
It all doesn't fit nicely.
I don't know if I can say it right. I know. You know how, like the black and white?
Yeah, yeah.
There's some gray in there somewhere.
I love to give people, I'm sorry, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that, you know, now that we've brought this up and have this issue, and now that we're saying that we're going to look at making some changes to it, I wonder if it might also be appropriate to issue a moratorium or create a moratorium that we not issue any more permits during this time. Hopefully, staff can get it back to us quickly. But we can shoot ourselves in the foot if we, if we don't do something along those lines.
I believe the permits in question are issued by TABC, though. We may have some role in that.
Does the city issue one too?
Issue a permit too.
We issue, we issue a permit as well.
That's what I understood from this, and that, I mean, I know we can't control TABC.
Right.
But according to TABC rules, they can't get, they cannot get a license. Are they eligible to get a license? They don't meet the distance.
The distance requirement.
Because the city's adopted rules, TABC would defer to the city. I think I've said that correctly.
Right. Remember that TAB state law only says cities get to regulate if you're within 300 feet. So then TABC looks at what our regulation is within that 300-foot window in order to determine whether or not it's allowed.
The city secretary would sign off saying that they made our requirements and our ordinance before TABC would issue a permit.
And I think TABC just increases the insurance and the requirements within that, if you're within a closer distance than ours.
And there's always a variance process.
Yes.
Call it that, for lack of a better term. Someone can appeal to council. I mean, you know, if you had a unfortunate situation, property, maybe there's a railroad track, and trees, and fence in between, but as the crow flies, they were within that, and it just didn't make sense. And it was good use of that property, and they appealed to a council in the future to have their bar, if it makes sense. That's always there. Because I understand what Mr. Bachmann is saying, that, you know, it's like, here we are about to, to take one use of this structure and this property off the books. But, you know, I get it. I would, the last time I was in that building was 15 years ago. I can't, maybe longer, I can't imagine what it's like now. I'm sure whoever asked those questions, and I don't know who, they walked off. I know if I was going to open a bar, unless you have deep pockets, I wouldn't, I don't know what is in the future for this building. I don't have any problem with staff bringing back recommended changes for the ordinance, and then we can again talk about it some more at that time and vote on it. Counsel, what do y'all think?
I'd see one come forward. Let's talk about it.
Think about those that are, those buildings being grandfathered, other businesses that have licenses currently. And sometimes they get their license suspended for whatever violations. They go for a period of time. What's going to be the impact when they come back to renew? Or I've noticed that there's a timeframe here, that they would have to come back. 60 days was 60 days. And then all of a sudden, oh, 60 days later, sorry, new rules, you can't reopen. You're done.
How about they, with any changes that they propose, they bring back a list of establishments that would be grandfathered, so we can see what the total impact would be?
Nice. Can y'all do that without a week's worth of work? Do you have a list of addresses?
That's a great point. It's just how do you?
Well, it's, you know, when they go 60 days close, and they come back to reestablish, sorry, ordinance has just kicked you out. You can no longer use that facility. And then you start talking about repurposing. And we've been talking about that recently with city manager. The building then goes through a whole other significant set of ordinance requirements to repurpose something else, and they may not meet those standards, current standards. So there's a lot of impacts just to consider.
What happens if a bar sells? Is that a reapplication process with TABC?
Yes.
So then they would have to pull out another permit. So once that bar is not really grandfathered in that certain location, then, yeah. So once it was done, it would never be that again ever, so.
They have very, a lot of similar locations right now. One, you know, out in one neighborhood, I'd like to see go, but been there for 50 years. And it sits right down in the middle of the neighborhood, and school's just down the street, and.
Is there a similar ordinance where a church can't build that close to a bar?
There you go.
No, I'm serious.
I don't think so.
Then it puts that bar's license in jeopardy, right?
If there would, there would be one that wouldn't allow people to build next to the airport and then complain about the noise from the airplanes, or near the railroad and the same thing.
Oh, goodness.
Thanks to, thanks to Ponder, I mean.
Yeah. And so staff, can Ms. City Manager Young bring us back some suggestions? Okay.
Can you bring them back quickly, since I'm not getting any traction?
Moratorium. Do we need that? And no, staff, do we need that moratorium?
I wouldn't support it.
That's up to y'all. I don't know if you could even get that on the agenda before the 6th.
A moratorium would have to be considered at a future meeting anyway. It couldn't be acted on tonight. Want to put it on a future meeting, discuss it at that point. It'd be just a matter of if we have enough people that want to consider a moratorium.
I'm not hearing support, and that's the port.
Well, then, let's, let's bring something back soon to look at.
Okay. So we're all in the same place. You have your direction you need. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Okay, so now, and thanks for the folks that came to listen on that issue. We're going to go ahead and go into executive session next door here, and that'll probably take 10, 15 minutes, and we'll come back out.
So the city council will recess for executive session on the 16th day of August 2016 at 5:43 PM. The subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney on a matter involving pending or contemplated litigation, or other matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Thank you.